Good evening, everybody. This is the City Council meeting of Monday, August 3rd, 2015. Let's go to Charlene for a roll call and determination of quorum.
Laurenti, Wright, Weifenbach, Doyle, Estes, Lewis, Drew, Roberts, Nordstrom, Scott, we have quorum.
Okay, now we'll go to the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. For tonight's invocation, do we have Brent Woodard from the Bible Christian Church? And you're welcome to participate but not required in the invocation, so you know. Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you today that we live in such a beautiful city. We ask today for the wisdom of God, for these as they make decisions that impact all of our lives. And then, Lord, would you help us to make decisions in the fear of God most of all? Touch these men and ladies as they work together, give them a good cooperative spirit. We ask it in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
(inaudible) of the United States, public, for which it stands, one nation under God,
Now we're on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a... Motion by Estes, and you know, you got it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we're on to the general public comment. A time for the members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. I have two speaker request forms. First is Jackie Gallego from the Native Sun News. Jackie, can you just go over to the microphone? That would... Then you won't have to yell.
Jackie Gallego with Native Sun News. I am the owner and operator, general manager. I have brought a few of my employees along so they can see how the works happen here. And basically, what we are requesting is the Native Sun News be incorporated into the 2016 budget for the City Minutes, as we were this last year and the year 2015. Originally, we were told that it was a $40,000 budget, and that's far from prior of where we were. We ended up with, as of right now, approximately $3,149.50 as far as what we have run for the City Minutes, and $2,605.60 in human resource ads that have been placed through the city. In total, it's $5,755. If we keep doing the annual, this looks like it should run between maybe $12,000 to $15,000. This is to reach out to the Native American community that reads our publication. In the minutes that we get, they're not duplicate of what the Rapid City does, because the Rapid City Minutes, we do not have the RFPs or any of the bid things that are in there. We get basically what you guys talk about on the evenings that you're there, which is included into what we are putting in the paper and also the budget itself. So we would like to be asking you guys to let us please be part of the City Minutes again with you.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Hey, next we have Ron Jeffries from the Central States Fair.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Ron Jeffries. This is Muchusara. He is the Central States Fair Treasurer on our Board of Directors, also from our Board of Directors here tonight, Charity Doyle, our city liaison. I'm here tonight just to extend an invitation to all of you to help celebrate our 70th anniversary of the Central States Fair. We have two major events that I'd like to make sure you put on your calendars, if at all possible, attend. The first one, on Friday, August 14th, at 3:00, we're having a ribbon cutting to kick off the start of the 70th anniversary of the fair. It'll be at the Bridger Steel Pavilion, which you have probably previously known as the Captain Glenn Building. I would like to have you come out and join us there for hors d'oeuvres and mayor's proclamation, governor's proclamation, et cetera, and start the kickoff to the 70th fair. Also, on Tuesday, August 18th, we have the Rapid City Chamber of Commerce Chamber Mixer, and that's hosted by Coors, Home Slice, Kick 104, and the Central States Fair. It'll be at the Coors tent. That'll start at 5:30, and we'd just like you to mark that on your calendars, if you could. Again, it's the 70th anniversary. We hope you all can come down and join us many times throughout the number of festivities that we have. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ron. We'll save our questions for later.
Thank you.
And I see we have Charmaine Whiteface here to speak to us during public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Allender. My name is Charmaine Whiteface. First, I apologize for having this mask on. My immune system is very weak from some of the meds I take, and so anytime I go into a public enclosed place, I have to wear a face mask to keep me from everybody else's germs. Years ago, 40 years ago, I worked at Central High School, and there was a lawsuit that was placed against, a civil rights lawsuit against Central High School at that time, and by the Indian Parent Committee. And they won the case, and in the process, I was a counselor at Central, and I did race sensitization with all the hundred-and-some teachers that were at Central. Forty years ago, this is not long after the Civil Rights, 1964 Civil Rights Act was passed. There was a lot of information out. The superintendent and the two principals I worked with at both the high schools were very, very good. They supported trying to have a really good learning atmosphere for all the students. However, recently, and it has been going on for years, it went on that time, too. What I did was race sensitization training for all the teachers at Central High, especially Central. We should have done it also at Stevens, but the court order said, no, just Central, so we did it there. I came to see Mayor Allender last week, and I brought with me, and I gave to him, a draft ordinance on racism in Rapid City, South Dakota. But we also had talked about the need for this same kind of legislation in the state of South Dakota. When I first brought to him the draft, it was a seed. It's, "I'm giving you this draft. I don't know, I didn't, I know I didn't make enough copies, but if you could hand these out to everybody." It's a seed of an idea that needs to happen. There needs to be legislation in Rapid City so that there would be something to cover what happened, like the incident at the Civic Center last winter. But there also needs to be a much stronger law within the state of South Dakota. And so, after talking with Mayor Allender, and him explaining to me the difference between ordinance in Rapid City, which could only be as high as a misdemeanor, and what I see a need for as a felony, then I rewrote the draft that I gave to you, and I put it into two places. One is a draft misdemeanor ordinance for Rapid City, and the other one is draft legislation for the state of South Dakota. And the other, there's a little note at the bottom, and it says, "Racism should not be interpreted to mean culturalism or misunderstandings caused by different cultures." When Mayor Shaw, Jim Shaw, a few years ago, was having his meetings, I wrote, I'm an editorial, editorial writer. Maybe some of you have read my stuff in the Rapid City Journal before. I've been a writer for a long time. I wrote an editorial at that time, and I haven't been able to find it. I probably have it on a disc that's, you know, filed away, because that was a few years ago, and I've written a lot of stuff since then. But I wrote an editorial on that time, because I said, "There's three issues here. One is the racism. That's an issue just all by itself." Then there's the cultural issue. That's the second one, all by itself. And then finally, there's the legal issue, because us Indians are always saying, "This is a treaty issue," and nobody knows what we're talking about. But it is. There's a legal issue here about the treaty. Again, another three separate issues here. But what I'm bringing to you is only about the racism. And there has to be something done to lay it on the table, you know? Let's do something. So what this ordinance is, is it's a seed. I'm planting a seed that something needs to be done, much stronger than having disorderly conduct. There needs to be something that completely, totally addresses when an action is an action of racism. So I hope you consider this. I hope you think about it. I hope you consider having it, adopting it as an ordinance for the city of Rapid City. And then I would hope that Rapid City would take the lead and push this legislation on into the state legislature. I don't know if you know that when the Civil Rights Commission came out, remember, Janklow was the governor at that time, that in that report, it said, "South Dakota was the most racist state in the Union, and Rapid City was the most racist city." And it bothered me then, and it still bothers me today. That's got to change. South Dakota does not need to have that reputation, but until people like you start doing something, it's going to keep that darn reputation, and we want to get rid of it, all of us. All of us want to get rid of that bad reputation. So I hope you think about my draft that I've given you, and really consider passing it as an ordinance for the city of Rapid City, and then pushing it on to the state. Let Rapid City be the model. Let Rapid City be the good model, role model, for the rest of the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Charmaine. Now we're on to the non-public hearing items, items 1 through 44. Open public comment on those items, and we have no speaker requests, so we'll close public comment. Onto consent items, 1 through 35. Are there any items that need to be pulled by the council? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion on 1 through 35. Motion by Doyle, and second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now, under the non-consent items, 36 through 44, we'll open public comment on those items, and I have one speaker request form from Eric Hykes. Did I get that right? Okay, good.
Good evening, City Councilmen, Councilwomen, and Mayor. Eric Hykes, 1115 West Boulevard. Chairperson of the Sustainability Committee. I'm here on the second evening. The first evening, we came and we asked that you acknowledge our annual report, which we spent a lot of time preparing. And I asked that the annual report be given, and I'd be happy to do that tonight for you. So the last time we met on this item, we asked that it be continued to tonight. That's why I understand it. Give us some time so we can present the report. So I'm happy to give it whenever you want me to, so.
Go ahead.
Okay, so...
Oh, wait, oh, wait. Okay, I made a foul.
Sorry.
When we get to item 41, then we'll have you...
Sure, sounds great. Okay.
There are no other speaker requests, so we will close public comment on those. We're on to item 36. Can I have these read in by Amanda Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 36 is the first reading of Ordinance 6052, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the with-then-described property as requested by Dream Design International, Inc., for a rezoning from low-density residential District 1 to low-density residential District 2 for property generally described as being located south of Catron Boulevard and east of US Highway 16. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Darla Drew. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Item passes, 37.
First reading, ordinance number 6067, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the with-then-described property as requested by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers, Inc., for Kelly Lidle, for a rezoning from medium-density residential district to high-density residential district for property generally described as being located at 3312 Jackson Boulevard. I make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second by John Roberts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Item passes, 38.
First reading, ordinance number 6050, an ordinance to amend provisions in the International Residential Code to address compressible, shifting, and expansive soils by amending chapter 15.13 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Laurenti. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Item passes, 39.
First reading, ordinance number 6032, an ordinance to promote historic preservation by repealing chapter 2.68 of the Rapid City Municipal Code and adopting provisions in chapter 17.04 and 17.54 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Make a motion to approve.
Okay, second by Mr. Estes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item passes, number 40.
First reading, ordinance number 6064, an ordinance to amend provisions concerning consolidation plaits and lot-line adjustment plaits by amending section 16.081.100 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Make a motion to approve.
Second by Darla Drew. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Now, onto Public Works Committee items. Have this read in by our Public Works Chair.
Item number 41 is to acknowledge the Standing Committee on Sustainability Annual Report, and I believe Mr. Hykes is here to give a presentation. I will yield the floor.
So, as I understand, we've sent the annual report in a PDF format to Technology here to be able to present. I'm hoping that it works. If it doesn't work, oh, there it is. Good, okay. So, I'll try to make this brief and pointed and interesting, so. The Sustainability Committee's annual report, we do this every two years. The last time we came before council, we presented 2014. Easily broken down into what we've done in the last two years and what we plan to do in the next year to two years. So... Okay, what button do I push here? This one? What's the next? What's the advance? There it is, all right. Here we go. Okay. So, history of the committee goes all the way back to the Green Cities Task Force and the Sustainability Conference in Portland. Some of you attended, I believe. Since then, we've become a full, fully grown committee, and we've got some great people, and this is what we've done. There's our committee. Great people in the community, PhDs, engineers, great minds, educators, organic farmers, energy people. So, there's our list. We have a liaison sitting up there with you tonight, Jerry, and part of Waste Management and the Recycling Advocate is one of our liaisons as well. We have sent several partners in the Planning Group, in the Public Works Group, and Parks Department, that sort of thing, that come in, take part in our meetings. There's our mission statement. The purpose of the Rapid City Standing Committee on Sustainability is to encourage education, stewardship, and policy leadership that will make our community a leader in economic, social, and environmental sustainability. Very important, it's a three-tiered system, so. We're not just crushing cans, and we're not just saving energy, but it's more of a comprehensive thing than that. We've got a website that's part of your website. This is how you get in touch with us, and this is how you see what we're doing with Minutes and things like that. You can also download our awards application here. This is what we established as goals in 2013. One of those is to develop three working relationships in the community. I think we've done that very well. We've developed 10 sustainability awards, which is really a big part of our "celebrate" mantra, and that's to showcase what we're already doing in the community that's very excellent and sustainable, so. Endorse or facilitate ordinances, that's something we're doing almost regularly. And then, of course, promotion of education with sustainability is the other core that we're working on. So here's what we've done to accomplish goal one. Lots happening there. Goal two, 10 awards, we gave them. They're great. One of them, for example, is the Light the Night Solar Path Project, was a collaboration between the police and various members of Parks and energy in the community. Great project, for example. Here's the other 10. Proud of every single one of these. Now, some of these are energy-based, some of them are social-based, some of them are economic-based, and some of them are ecologically-based. It's a nice balance. We encourage everyone here to go visit General Beetle's Pizza Garden, if you get the chance. And then, of course, we really had high praise for what the community did to bond together during the blizzard and the cleanup following Dakota's, GCC Dakota's Atlas Storm. Their efforts were notable, so. There's a typical shot of us presenting our awards. We have a very handsome plaque that's actually recycled beetle-killed timber, and there's a couple proud recipients up there. And then, our endorsement or facilitation of ordinances for the bike path, alternative energy, the hen ordinance, et cetera. We're used a lot of times as sort of a first ear for a lot of the people that bring forth things that they think should change in the community. We try to help guide those and assist them. We don't necessarily take the role as petitioner, however, but we try to send them on with what we call our endorsement to you. So, we actually vote on that, so. And those conversations can get interesting and fun, so. And then, of course, there is some more specific things we've accomplished for the National Science Foundation, the Barb King Environmental Stew Shurp Award, the Parks Department's central control, and then, of course, some energy legislation that we've been working We've worked diligently and kind of shoulder to shoulder with some of our cohorts in planning and Public Works with the Comprehensive Plan. There are some mentions in there of some of the work we've done. The Cobbler Cafe Project was a great testimonial to encouraging those to help each other in the community. Last spring, we kind of helped facilitate Arbor Day with the absence of the Urban Forestry Committee. We were happy to do it. It was great. We have a forester on our committee, so that made it even more tangible. And then, of course, here's what we've got in store for the upcoming year. It's to continue the work we're doing with our awards, and, of course, promotion within the community and building awareness for sustainability. We have very big plans to execute a sustainability conference in the community, a great chance to get in-state and out-of-state commerce and people coming here to visit and showcase what we're doing, and doing well in our community, and also create an opportunity to educate. Has anyone heard of the Plain Green event that Sioux Falls had? Well, it was very well attended, it was well-appreciated, great education, and they don't have it anymore. So I think it's a chance to get a step up on Sioux Falls and have a great conference, so we're hoping to move forward with that. Most importantly, and what I really want to talk to you a lot about tonight, does anyone remember the Star of the West logo that we once had in Rapid City? I don't know if that's still part of our current byline, but... There is a third-party certification that we are encouraging Rapid Cityans to seek. It's a baseline system where we quantify and compare what we're doing across the board to other communities in the United States. The closest one to us is down in Fort Collins that's STAR certified. This is something that is in the Comprehensive Plan as a recommendation. We want to do everything we can to see this accomplished. It's a pretty simple framework, but a really good metric on how we can do things more sustainably. Save money, create revenue, that sort of thing. And then, of course, this is something you should all listen closely to, because this STAR rating system will require that somebody on the staff or a staff position in the city of Rapid City be created to help administer and coordinate this. This is a big ask for us, and I know the budget is coming forward, and we'd like to see this considered. This will help you achieve the Comprehensive Plan that you've created, so. And we'll do everything we can as a grassroots group of volunteers to see that gets accomplished. Some of the other goals I've mentioned already, we continue to build the network within the city's departments in how to achieve good things, and continue to promote our education We're going to do Tree City and continue the work there, and also another Arbor Day, if Jeff will let us, I think that was enjoyable. We had some great brownies. We had some great brownies and some other good times. And then, coming up in terms of ordinances that we've seen, food co-op, more tree work, bees, in the urban context of bees, and the protection of pollinators and how important they are to a healthy ecosystem and also a healthy city, better ordinances to protect our night skies and the resource we have and the beautiful stars we see above us, and, of course, how we can do more for local foods and agriculture through our already very successful farmer's market. And lastly, we're your resource, give us some things to do. We really are a pretty effective group, and through the cross-networking we can do with these other groups, we're happy to pick up a couple things in our agenda. Now that we've challenged you with ours, we're happy to take on some jobs as well. I think I brought also a brief summary of the STAR program. I can walk through that really quickly, too, if you'd like me.
Move to acknowledge your report.
Okay, second by Amanda Scott. We have a comment from Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Eric. One thing that's been talked about on the Sustainability Committee and through the School of Mines is the recent signed, and Terry can help on this one, is the Memorandum of Understanding with South Dakota Tech, I believe it's between, is it between? Terry's not even here. All right. There's an agreement, Memorandum of Understanding, signed between School of Mines, Civil Engineering, and City Rapid City, which is going to give us a tremendous opportunity to support not only sustainability, but South Dakota School of Mines in their work and research and so forth to help our city. So, there's been discussion at the committee of how we can make that work, and I think we, as council and our staff, needs to be visiting with Tech and say, how can we work with you? I know President Wilson and everyone down there, Holly's left, the Civil Engineering Department, but Jennifer's with the committee, Jennifer Bennings is a doctor on staff in civil. They're very interested in working with us on things like stormwater, water control, water quality. We did work in research and compost utilization, on and on and on. I think it's just an opportunity to help that college community grow where it needs to be, it could be, and help us, and I think that will be an issue coming before us through the Sustainability Committee. Thank you. I look forward to work with you, Eric.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, you can.
Okay. The foremost consideration that, you know, my simple suggestion would be, one effective use of those School of Mines students would be to pair them with a mentor in each of the different programs here, albeit Waste Management, or Energy, or Water, and have them assist those mentors with crunching the numbers as part of that STAR evaluation, and so we can get a one-two punch there. Not only are we challenging that mentor in their thinking on how we can make these systems better, but we're also giving them a resource to do some of the math and the legwork, if you will. So, it's one thought I have there, Jerry, so, yep.
Okay, next we'll go to Darla Drew.
Just a comment to Councilman Wright. We will have President Wilson here on August seventeenth, at my invitation, when we were talking about the banner placement and not really being able to communicate that much with the School of Mines, I asked her to be here, so that might be an opportunity for us. I'll give her a heads-up, you know, to maybe talk a little bit about that MOU. And then, I have a couple of questions for Eric, if I may, Mayor. So, could you please elaborate on what are the benefits of the STAR? I mean, if that would be a cost to the city, what are the benefits to us?
The first and foremost benefit would be comparing what we're doing to a baseline of success. So, and if you take, for example, the way we're handling stormwater, how does it compare against national standards for total dissolved solids, total suspended particulate? Are the things we're doing worth celebrating, or can we refine them a bit? Have we really had a fresh look at the math, Darla? That's one example. The other is, and I think the PR spin on it would be excellent, would be, we would be the first of our kind in the Dakotas, and definitely very, up with the list of very progressive communities like Fort Collins, like Durango, like Portland, who, you know, are doing a lot of future planning in making some adjustments to their policies and the way they do things to, you know, make, to build a better mousetrap, to make things more efficient. And there's dollars when it comes into those situations to be saved as well, so.
Is there money to fund this kind of opposition, this kind of research, that kind of thing? Is there grant possibilities for us, Eric? Because I just don't see this happening organically. I kind of see this happen, would have to be really spearheaded by your organization.
We're happy to do it with the one insistence is that you put a full-time staff person on the city's roll of faces, if you will, that is doing this work.
It's okay.
Yep. So, we're, we cannot be the petitioner and the actual doer. We can be the support team and the cheerleader, for sure. But this is a cake that's made internally, so. And then, that cheerleader is also the one that's kind of getting all these other people at Waste Management, at Stormwater, at Energy, at, you know, school systems to compare what they're doing to a baseline and do better, right? And the costs are pretty minimal. I mean, the initial investment is in the ballpark of five or six thousand to do the certification. However, the savings are substantial in what we could be doing in the long term for putting money back in the bank, so. I'm trying to say that in the most generic financial terms I can think of, so.
All right, thank you, Eric. That's it.
We'll go back to Jerry Wright.
Thank you. No one on the council here was ever at the Green City Conventions, there were people before us, and I think the League of Cities has agenda items on Green Cities Sustainability. And I think we, as council members, we look at those agendas, maybe we should send a person or two. But there are things that will benefit from indirectly, such as the, like that nightlight thing that you're talking about, we go to indirect lighting versus direct lighting, where you improve the appearance of a community in many ways. It enhances the enjoyment and the environment. I don't know if the dollar impact's going to be immediate, but it will help, just like a lot of things we've done in downtown. So, I would encourage our attendance and involvement in research and development, and I think maybe attendance in one of these conferences would be a well-invested, good investment for either the mayor or one of us, so, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge the report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, onto item forty-two, which is a Legal and Finance Committee item, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. To approve the loan agreement promissory note with Pioneer Bank and Trust for new golf course equipment that the city council had already previously approved this year, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Second by Richie. Go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could, Mr. Beigler, if you could come up, I have just a question, maybe a comment Mr. Beigler, on this particular item, and I know a couple of the other council people have brought this up with this particular cost center, but there's some concern about costs, obviously, and the ability for the cost center to pay for itself, seeing as we have subsidized the golf course with general fund money previously. So, I personally have a concern about this added cost, although it's needed, but I want to make sure that the cost of it gets transferred into the services that are provided by the cost center, so that it can recover and pay for this newly added cost, which is substantial. We're looking at about two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. So, my question to you is, is this anticipated in the two thousand and sixteen budget for your area?
Yes, it is, yes. And it is, the payments for this are anticipated to come out of the golf course development fund.
Right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor of item forty-two?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item, motion passes. Okay, number forty-three. Big Sky Development, or Big Sky Business Park, a request by Renton Associates LLC for Dakota Heartland Incorporated for a preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as lying south of Homestead Street. The recommendation is to approve with stipulations, and I want to make note that Council President Brad Estes is abstaining from this vote. Okay, a motion by Charity Doyle. Second by Richie Nordstrom. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item forty-four. Superpumper addition, a request by FMG Incorporated for DTJ LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as south of East Oakland Street, north of Fairmont Boulevard, and west of Campbell Street. The recommendation is to approve with stipulations. I have a motion by Brad Estes and a second by Richie Nordstrom. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Going down to public hearing items forty-five through fifty-four, if no speaker requests, we will open and close public comment on those items. And so, now, onto consent, public hearing items, items forty-five through fifty-two. Does council want to pull any of these items off of consent? Motion to approve all these items by Estes, second by Nordstrom. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Now, on to the non-consent public hearing items fifty-three and fifty-four. Can I have these read in by our Public Works Chair, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number fifty-three is a request by FMG, Inc., for South Dakota School of Mines and Technology Foundation for a vacation of right-of-way for properly generally described as being located between East St. Joseph Street, East Kansas City Street, between Maple Avenue and Elm Avenue. Make a motion to approve with stipulations.
Second. Second by Jerry Wright. Seeing no discussion. All those in favor? Those opposed? Item carries, fifty-four.
Item number fifty-four is second reading of ordinance number sixty-zero-five, an ordinance to add bed and breakfast facilities as conditional uses in the Park Forest zoning district by amending section seventeen point zero-eight point zero-three-zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and make a motion to approve.
Second by Steve Laurenti. No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. On to the bill list, and we'll go to Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no changes to the bill list, so the total is that which is before you at ten million, five-hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and eleven cents.
Motion by Laurenti, second by Drew. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion and a second to adjourn Nordstrom and Roberts. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.